Which has been effective in allowing the spread of the virus. And secondly, as we, we, part of this has been related to a, a hair salon that has opened downtown. And as part of this, we actually leased that building that the hair salon is located in. And we expect tenants in city owned property to comply with the governor's order as we would expect them to comply with any other law or regulation. We're clearly sympathetic with the challenges the businesses are facing at this time. But we also need to be aware of the broader business, excuse me, the broader community. And I would also indicate that the item that we just added to the agenda is an administrative program in which there will be money, at least 400,000 available to the city, grants for small businesses that are having trouble and another 600,000 that are available to, for rent, the relief and other things. And I'm sure that some owners of small businesses may have problems with their rent and their mortgage. So I would ask that the community follow for the health and safety of the entire community, follow the regulations imposed upon medical advice by the governor and also by the city. And I think that's very crucial that we ought to all have a, a broader sense of concern for the well being of the community. My second point I want to make relates to another thing about the broader sense of the well being of the community. We've read recently that for this election cycle, for five positions that pay absolutely nothing, there has been contributed well over $200,000 for political campaigns. I, I, I think that's way too much of an influence of big money. And I am mindful of a ordinance, I believe it was a city charter amendment, that the city of Portland has adopted about campaign financing that limits individual contributions and contributions by PACs to $500. And I don't know if we have to do this by city charter amendment or if we can do this by council amendment. But this is something that at a further meeting, I would like to explore. And, and it may be the next council meeting, which is after the election, or it may be at a following meeting. But it just seems to me that it's better public policy to, to limit the contributions. And despite the fact that corporations and PACs are people and money is free speech, it seems to me that it makes some sense to let the citizens decide if we want to have all this money from whatever source funneled into the city campaigns. And I'll be asking the council to look at that at a later date. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just had to sort of echo what Counselor Nordike had mentioned earlier. There has been a great need for communities who have been hit hard by COVID-19, who are just, are mentioning that they're having food insecurity issues. And so I've been going to the food pantry of Marion County, Marion Polk Food Share on a weekly basis to pick up food boxes as well as fresh produce and distribute them to communities in need. I've been sort of doing it on a first come, first served basis and who asks the day of when I start mentioning that I pick up. And I usually do it on Mondays and Wednesdays, but just depends on the week. On a daily, nearly daily basis, I also pick up lunch, the, the to go meals from the Salem Kaiser Schools, usually from different schools depending on the day and distribute to the community as well for families who are not able to make it to any of the schools to grab a free lunch. And I, again, like Counselor Nordike, if people have the time to be able to pick up food and to distribute to the community, there's a lot of people who need it and need the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Mr. City Manager.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I have two COVID-19 related items for, for council this evening. The first is an update from Mike Niblock, Fire Chief. The city activated its emergency operations center early in the pandemic. Fire, police, finance and staff from other departments have been coordinating information, plans, supplies and logistics, and have been monitoring and communicating with state and county health and emergency management staff. The EOC's work has kept the city organization well positioned during the pandemic and for the reopening. I've asked Mike to be the city's organizational lead on reopening. Mike will give a brief EOC status report summarizing state and county reopening requirements and frameworks and city reopening plans that are under development. The second item is the item that was added under information reports 5C. Kristen Rutherford will preview a proposed assistance program for small business, nonprofit organizations and low income residents. No action is expected tonight from council. It's an information report to give you an opportunity to ask us questions and to provide guidance if you choose for when it's brought back to you at a later council meeting. So I'd ask Mike to provide a brief update to you under City Manager comments before you move on to the rest of your agenda.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, City Manager Powers, and good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to present a, as City Manager said, a very brief. There's a plethora of information that comes out almost daily and has since the pandemic began. But just wanted to bring you up to speed on some of the progress we've made at the EOC, which is really, at the beginning of the pandemic, was focused on making sure we kept our, our employees that were staying in the workforce actively, physically dealing with customers as safe as possible. And we have achieved that. And then we have a lot of folks that are distant, tele, telework from home. And so largely we are, we are still meeting the customer needs for the community. We're just doing it in a different way than we have in the past. And so we had to kind of adapt and overcome, you know, the situation that was before us. At the end of the day, as Steve said, we want to provide a safe and steady, sure progress to keep our employees and our customers healthy. And so as we begin to see the state prepare to open up and relax some of the standards that they put in place to keep the community safe and to lessen the spread of COVID-19. As you are aware, Marion County has one of the highest incident rates in the state as far as the percentage is per 100,000 Marion and Polk County. Polk County is somewhat lower than Marion County. And so we need to be mindful of that as we reopen. The governor has put together some very good criteria to reopen the state. And I won't go through those step by step, but there is some significant gating criteria that's required of each county to be able to open in phase one. Today, we found out that there is going to be a pre-phase one opening, which includes retail businesses across the entire state will be opening May 15. And so that, that was brand new news today. And so we're reacting to that and preparing and working with our partners. We've worked very closely with Marion County. We've had some conversations with them about how we might help, help meet the needs and the requirements that they're, they're, they're being put to them to be able to open the county. And so we're, we're continuing to do that work as well. The, like I said, this is a, this is a very dynamic situation. And, and as we learn more about the virus and how it spreads and what we can do to, to keep our folks safe, we are building that plan to do just that. And we are following the governor's framework, CDC's framework, as we begin to prepare to open up sectors of, of our city services, our storefronts, basically. And some will open sooner than the laters, than others, just based on the type of interaction they have with the public. And of course, you've probably heard that if you look across the world, as we begin to relax, our, our things that are in place to prevent the spread of the virus, we are likely to see some spikes in the virus spreading. So we have to be prepared for that as well. The city is well prepared as far as our personal protective equipment goes. We have a four to six month supply on hand. So we're very prepared for that. That's something we actually did during the last pandemic scare we had, which was H1N1 about six or eight years ago. I guess it was eight years ago. We prepared by having a pandemic supply at the city. So we were ready for this pandemic, as ready as anybody could be. And so we feel like we're making good progress. And I guess the bottom line is we want to, we want to make sure that we are making the right decisions when we decide to open something and we don't have to go backwards once we make that decision. And so we can better to serve our, our public. And with that, I will, I'll, I'll be done. That's about as brief as I could get with that.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Counselor Hoy. Ron Mute.
Thank you. I, anyway, am I off of it now?
Yeah.
Yes. Great. Thank you, Chief. Just to, to, can you clarify the application status that the county has submitted? They've submitted that to the governor's office, but that has not been approved yet, has it? Or has it?
On the governor's website, I just checked it right before I gave my report. There are all the counties listed. And if they have submitted an application, it says under review. I know that Marion County has submitted their application, but there's nothing listed under their, under Marion County as under review. It's just, it's blank there right now. So they either haven't gotten to it because there's a bunch of counties that put stuff in, I think on the first day. But we checked and they, they said that they did submit their application. And so there should be in the process to go through the review process as well. That's to open at phase one. The, the pre-phase one is everybody's opening retail establishments, May 15 statewide. That's nothing to do with the county's application. The county's application allows them to open at phase one businesses, which is I think restaurants and bars and, and wine reasons, those kind of things.
And we don't know yet when that, when that'll be reviewed or when there will be a decision.
We do not. We did, we did reach out to the county, our county partners today and say, you know, hey, did you, did you turn it in? Was it submitted? And just kind of just trying to see where we were at. And they said they told us they did submit it. So that's all they know either. Thank you.
Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. I guess a logistics question, those applications that the counties submit, are they, do they work with cities within the counties on that? Or is that more of a county kind of unilateral decision? How, how is that advising, I guess, working with the city county partners?
As far as their plan to reopen, that was really a county, that's really in the county's purview to submit that plan to the county commissioners. Now, having said that, I know there were some conversations and there was some, give us some feedback on some things. But most of that plan was, came directly from the county.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, Counselor, I've been in a couple of meetings with the county commission and their staff. I believe Mr. Powers has talked with them as well. But this is, because they're the health authority, this is in their purview.
Yeah, I think, thank you for the clarification. I've been asked a couple of times by constituents, like, is this gonna come to a vote of the city, you know, city jurisdictions? And I, I said, no, it's a county. But I was just wondering how that coordination, what it actually looks like on the ground, making that decision or that.
They'll make, as I understand it, Chief, correct me, they make application to the state. It's reviewed at the state level. Their plan is approved or modified. And they continue through phase one, phase two. But it's, it's done at that level. We really will not have, as far as I understand, the city manager, we won't have any action demanded or expected of the city to enact these different phases and moving forward. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are, as, as we would for any emergency, as, as Fire Chief Niblock mentioned, we have made ourselves available to provide assistance through our emergency operations center. There may be some specific actions that you will be informed of or brought to you for consideration. But those would be very small and separate from the larger approval of, of reopening sectors of the economy. As you said, that is a, a state and, and county decision.
What about city programs? We opened the dock park this past Friday. Will we be going through a similar process of reopening, like the library, city offices, things like that? Are we being monitored under the same phases as private business? Or how's that?
Well, one of the, one of the really points of pride for me, and I think for council as well, is that the city, again, primarily through initially the emergency operations center and then tremendous cooperation from our employees and, and leadership from the departments and managers. We've really, I, I think, set a standard for keeping our employees safe while maintaining our services. Unlike other local governments, unlike the state government, we kept our parks open, for example. So we, as Mike said, we have been emphasizing health of our employees throughout. We've been responsive to concerns that we've received and we're taking that same approach with the reopening. Mike phrased it as a, a, a safe and steady approach. Our EOC team is going to work sites and evaluating what changes are needed to ensure social distancing, to ensure there are, if necessary, physical barriers to, to stop the spread of, of the virus, to stop the spread of, of droplets from coworkers or, or, or customers. And then certainly for specific services and specific work sites, the EOC team will work in cooperation with that department to evaluate, for example, Center 50+ while it's a valuable service, a vulnerable population, how, how do we, how do we balance that? And the library. So those, to answer your question most directly, Mayor, yes, we will be, and it's already underway, you know, evaluating when we will be able to reopen our services physically in a way that's safe for our employees and for our, our customers. And I anticipate because of the excellent work that the city team has been doing, that we'll be well positioned when we're allowed to under the county's reopening plan.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a, a quick question. So let's just say that the county, the, the first application is approved and more businesses start opening up, especially in Salem. But then we're still supposed to follow the guidelines in terms of which tier of approval? So let's say other businesses who are not approved to open up yet start opening up. Is that then become a county issue that we, that if, let's say someone told us or complained to us that a business was outside of what they were doing, do we then have to tell the county that? Or does that become more of a state related issue?
Counselor, or Mr. Powers, if you want to answer that.
The direction in, in, in Police Chief Moore is, is also on the line. The, the direction, the guidance that we have received, that law enforcement has received is for businesses that are not following the governor's executive orders. And I think in anticipation of, of the phased reopening, if there are businesses under the scenarios that you just mentioned, Counselor, that those would be brought to the attention of the appropriate state regulatory agency. I, I don't know, Chief Niblock might know if there's a, a county step between our police department, for example, sharing information with the appropriate regulatory agency at the state level or, or, or would be a direct report or sharing of information for consideration by that state agency. You know, Jerry, Chief, do you?
This is Chief Moore. I think Steve summarized it very well. Our role and the governor's expectation of local law enforcement is that we would refer businesses that are out of compliance to the state and the regulatory or licensing arm of the state would do the enforcement. There is no expectation that local law enforcement would, would in fact take action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that there was some talk of taking a regional approach to this situation. But given our, you know, two county city, are we in a, potentially in a situation where a part of our city could be subject to one set of rules? And the other part of our city could be subject to another set of rules? Or is there going to be some sort of coordination so we don't split, split things up like that?
I, I think the coordination's underway between the two counties to make sure that it's, it's done. They recognize the situation for Salem, both counties do. And I think they're in pretty close communications to make sure that we're not looking at a, one half opens, one half doesn't. Plus, a lot of this is occurring at the state level where the state approves it. So they tend to be doing it in larger health, health authority districts, health districts. So it's a, it's, they're tending to do it in a more regional approach. Although you do see Lynn County moving forward now and, and Polk and Marion not quite moving forward as rapidly. So they're, but luckily we don't have a piece of Albany. We have, we're, we're with Polk. I think we're okay. Don't you, Chief Niblock? Isn't that kind of your impression?
Yeah, I think what we saw today was, I think that concern had been expressed by a lot of people that if we do a patchwork opening, many people live across the county line. And so you're going to have people moving around. So I, I think that's why they came to the conclusion they're going to open all retail across the state all at once. And I still think they are looking at the regional hospital approach for some of the criteria. Our, our hospitals in our region, we, we meet those criteria already. So that's really not, what, what's really up for consideration is that what the county has to meet and the counties working together have to meet. And Polk and Marion are, are on the same page with each other. Polk is a little bit further behind. I don't know if they've completed their application or not. I, I think they have. But I didn't see theirs on the mayor's website or the governor's website either today. But yeah, you're right. I think they're trying to do, to make sense of when they do open an area that they're not leaving half a town like us, you know, West Salem closed and, and the rest of Salem was open.
Yeah. I think we can be confident that will not happen here. I, I really think they're, they're moving in tandem. Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. A minor acronym question for the city manager. EOC. What does that mean, Steve? EOC?
EOC, Emergency Operations Center.
And it's, so, okay, good. I thought it might be some sort of city employee stuff, but now I understand. Thanks. So I really, to me, EOC is Equal Opportunity Commission, but that's, that's a different subject. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Great. Thank you very much. Well, we're coming up on Memorial Day. I have a proclamation we do annually. So I'll go ahead. It's a Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas the men and women in the armed forces of the United States place the security of our nation before their own safety. And America will forever, will be forever grateful for their service. And whereas Memorial Day is celebrated every year to collectively reflect on the memories of those who have served this country and to be reminded that freedom is never free. And whereas we honor our fallen soldiers, our military personnel and our veterans who continue to serve for the ideals of freedom, and we pay tribute to their personal sacrifices. And whereas in Salem, Oregon, we are committed to honoring the memories of service members who perished in service to their country with reverence and gratitude. Whereas each, and whereas each person who lost their life in service to his or her country was a loved one who was cherished by family and friends. And each death was a tremendous loss to the community, state and nation. Now therefore I. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 25th, 2020, as Memorial Day 2020, and call upon residents to reflect upon the service of our courageous men and women in uniform, and thank them for the ultimate sacrifice they have given to protect our freedoms and liberties, dated this 11th day of May 2020. And we will be sending that to the appropriate organizations. I have no presentations. We do have a consent calendar, though, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Second by Kazer.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have item 2.1A, which is the draft city council minutes from April 27, 2020. Item 2.3A ratifies the city manager's execution of all U.S. Department of Justice FY20 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant documents to accept the $247,044 award. And that concludes the consent calendar.
A discussion? If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, we will move on. I don't have any public hearings, special orders of business. We have a couple of information items. Counselor Leung, did you have, was one of these of interest to you?
Yes, the one that's for my ward, item number 5.0B.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
Yes, just questions.
Okay, great.
And I'm not sure who would be able to answer. It was actually a letter that was written by the Willamette Engineering, Inc., on page, I guess the second page. And I just wanted to confirm, based on their document, what are the times that developers allowed to, for construction noise levels, and preserving existing street traffic flows and driveway access? Like, what are the work, general work times?
I suggest we start with Norm Wright and Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy from Community Development, and if we don't have the exact answers, we'll certainly get those back to council tomorrow.
Norman, you're muted right now.
All right, there we go. Sorry. Norman Wright, Community Development Director. And your first question there, Counselor Leung, as I understand it, is a question about construction times, is that correct?
Correct, because the letter specifically just states they're going to confirm to, I guess, the statutes for time of construction. I'm just wondering what those times are.
Mm-hmm. I'll, I'm going to make my best effort here to answer that question, but I may be off by about 30 minutes. As I remember from Brady Rogers, who monitors these noise concerns when it comes to construction, our active times are approximately 7:00 to 4:00 or 5:00 PM. Anything that is outside of the, shall we say, normal business hours of that nature would certainly require an additional permit and his review, as well as some necessary monitoring and mitigation should a permit be issued. You have a second question as well, as I understand, about, was it traffic control, traffic management, access management?
That was actually part of that little statement, so I'm not sure if that was a separate time, or is that also within that timeframe of the hours that you provided?
Yeah, that's a little bit different if it's about traffic control, particularly as it relates to the improvements of public streets with a private development. And so I don't necessarily have the specifics of this particular project right immediately available to me, so I'm going to pass this to Lisa and see if she can answer something about, again, traffic control with these improvements.
Hi there, Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy, your planning administrator. So Norm was right about the construction timelines. It does go a little bit later. They can do construction from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night, and so that applies to the noise from building, but also it applied to the vehicles on the street. So those are the normal timelines that we allow construction for any project. Does that answer your question, Counselor Leung?
That does. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, it's more of a statement than a question. During, a few weeks ago, the council had passed, with one objection, which was me, on the Battle Creek Park Plan, and one of the things I had discussed, and other council members had discussed, was stormwater and drainage. So I see in this letter from the Willamette Engineering that they specifically had mentioned about creating a detention pond that's going to be collecting quite a bit of the storm water system. So I'm glad that that's actually mentioned in here, in terms of like, how that water might eventually flow down and affect other communities farther down the road. So thank you for ensuring that that was addressed, especially going forward as we continue to have development in the south side of Salem. You're welcome.
Any, anything else? Yes, Counselor Anderson?
I have another question on that same site, I think, the Sunnyside Road Southeast Development. I'm just curious, I don't know if it's on the vicinity map. I can see where it is off of Sunnyside, but I'm a little confused as to where the streets are coming in and off of Sunnyside. I'm looking at the subdivision plan, which is the back page of the vicinity map, and I'm a little unsure as to where there's, looks like kind of two back-to-back cul-de-sacs that are connected, and I don't know where they're each are going in and out on the street.
Sure, I can explain that a little bit better. So the property that's shown on the vicinity map is larger than the property that's subject to the subdivision.
Okay.
So right now, it's a large parcel with a church, and they have a lot of extra land. And so they did a partition that was on the council agenda at the last meeting, and broke off a portion, and that smaller portion.
More attention as to what you partitioned last time, okay.
I definitely am not saying that.
You're very kind.
Yeah.
Okay, any, anyone else? Okay, very good. We'll move on then. So we have no questions on 5C, that was the one that was added. Nothing on that? Okay. We'll go then.
Mayor, I would, I would offer and recommend that you do give Kristen an opportunity to kind of summarize, because this is a significant policy issue that will be coming to you later. So if you don't, if...
Okay, oh, yeah, that's great.
If you'll indulge us, we'll ask Kristen to provide a summary of what she's thinking behind the proposal that's before you this evening.
Okay, Kristen, what were you thinking here?
What was I thinking? We often wonder that, right? What we are bringing forward for approval starting later in this month is a program we have been working on to help us prevent homelessness in the community, and also be able to support our small businesses using our Community Development Block Grant resources that come to the city as entitlement every year, and the general fund allocation that council makes available to support nonprofits in our community every year. So on an annual cycle, we go through a grant program to review applications and then distribute the grants. This year, we have a unique situation where we are receiving an additional entitlement specifically to address the COVID crisis through the Community Development Block Grant Program. We also look at how we can free up some additional capacity to get money out the door a little bit sooner, and to also make some of these resources available in a way that is a little bit more flexible. And so to do that, what we're proposing is to take some of our normal general fund applicants and move them from general fund to community development block grant. This will allow us to have additional general fund resources to assist the business community without all of the regulations that go along with the Community Development Block Grant Program, and it will help us get that money out the door faster than our normal block grant cycle. To have access to the block grant funds, we have our normal annual entitlement that we have to take through a public hearing process, and develop our annual action plan, bring that to council for approval, that goes back to HUD, and then we typically get those funds in the September, October timeframe. So that process is going to continue as it does every year. Then as a secondary process, we're going to amend our current annual action plan, and we will be bringing that to council in early June, because HUD can process an amendment faster than they can process a whole new annual action plan. So we're looking at amending our current plan to incorporate the additional entitlement that we're getting to address COVID, and then also to reallocate some currently unallocated funds within our Community Development Block Grant pot of money, and also to take funds that are allocated currently to Yaquena Hall and move those to this allocation, and then in our next year's process, reallocate new entitlement funds to replace the funds that are in Yaquena. Since Yaquena's money can't get out the door quickly, this is a way we can use those funds to benefit the community in a much faster timeline. So we will be coming forward in our next meeting with a proposal relating to general fund money and a budget allocation for this fiscal year to take some of what we would have in next year's budget to move it to this year, so we can start getting money out the door in June. So we will add to that an additional $88,000 that includes money that is accrued from fines within enterprise zones, as well as a grant we're receiving from Marion County. So with those funds, and with that approval at the end of May, we will be able to start granting funds to the business community in June. And then we will have a second grant cycle, once HUD has approved our amendment to the annual action plan, so we can start getting some of the Community Development Block Grant Funds out to the community for prevention of homelessness through rental assistance, mortgage assistance, Wheels, Hood Wheels kinds of programs, and business grants. And that will occur in, hopefully, in the July to August timeframe, depending on how quickly HUD can review all of these different amendments that they're going to be receiving. And then sort of the third tranche of all of this will occur in the fall through our normal grant cycle, when we receive our normal annual entitlement.
So ultimately, what you're doing, it sounds like, is you're creating more flexibility in your responses to COVID, and its impact on small business. Small business being small or not small?
Exactly. So any, so any grants that we provide to small businesses through the Community Development Block Grant Program has a number of constraints relating to the business size. They have to be very small businesses. They have to be disadvantaged businesses. They have to document that they're not using any other federal resources, or sort of double dipping on federal resources. We will be providing business grants through that program, but then we will also use general fund to provide more flexibility to reach those businesses that would not be eligible through the block grant program.
Do any of our homeless efforts suffer from this movement of funds? I mean, will they be, or will they be enhanced by the way you're doing this?
Nobody will be suffering. They'll all be moving over to the block grant. So as a part of the COVID response, HUD has changed some of their normal rules. We're generally limited to how much of our entitlement we can spend on these service kinds of programs. They have lifted that cap.
Okay.
We don't have that kind of constraint that we normally have. They've lifted that for two years.
Okay. Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So who gets to decide? Let's just say that you do an open call, and the applications are received. Who in the end gets to decide on which businesses, whether small or bigger ones, are approved for this particular block grant cycle?
Okay, so for the, for the businesses, we will be opening, it's sort of a first-come, first-served program, where we will establish what the criteria are, and then take applications, basically, until the money is gone, and that's how most jurisdictions have been doing it. So we'll be developing the criteria that says what the money can be used for, what the parameters are on the business in terms of size, that kind of stuff. In most of the programs that have been established in the last couple months through the county or other communities, those funds have gone very, very quickly within hours.
Will there be technical assistance for small business? I think one of the things that's happened, we've seen in other, at the federal level, it's those guys that are ready to go real fast with a good corporate lawyer, move fast, they have a grant writer, and they get the money. Will you be providing technical assistance to make sure this gets spread in the community, that it isn't just a race? Or how will you, will you be doing advance work for this with small businesses to help them understand how to make application? And do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. I do. I do understand. We have not gotten into that level of detail yet. We have been doing some outreach to some nonprofits in the community, like Willamette Workforce Partners, to see if there may be a partner that would want to work with us in administering the grant program and helping us accept the applications. So that's the kind of work that we're doing right now, is kind of setting up the guidelines for the grants, and trying to find if there are any partners that are willing to work with us on this. It's a little bit challenging to find a partner that wants to take on the CDBG side of things because of the number of rules and procedures that are involved in that.
Okay. Counselor Leung, I apologize. Did you have anything else you wanted to ask about this?
No, not for now. Thank you.
Well, do know, Ms. Rutherford, that I think this, it's a great idea that it will be including small, and in some cases disadvantaged, companies or companies that have not traditionally been assisted by this, but it would just seem like outreach is going to be essential to make sure that we don't just perpetuate that pattern of giving, or that pattern of funding that can follow that way. Do you know what I'm, again, I'm concerned that that be real clear, that that's really, I think, real important, that this would be spread widely and evenly across the community.
Absolutely, and there will be more than one go at funds with different targeted audiences because of the constraints that surround the Community Development Block Grant Program. So we're looking at a program to try to hit a number of different kind of sectors within our business community.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Rutherford, I want to talk a little bit about the, sort of the methodology, and I'm wondering if that sort of first-come, first-served is really the best way to do this, or if we shouldn't be looking at something where we actually have some sort of criteria where we can maybe prioritize the greatest good for the community, rather than just a free-for-all?
We can certainly do that. Do you have criteria that you have in mind when you say something like greatest good for the community, certain business types, or sectors, or employment?
No, not yet. I just, I've just been thinking, this is a pretty small pot of money.
Yeah.
It's not going to go very far when you start spreading it around. So it just seems like we should try to focus on what can be the most, do the most good for our community as a whole. Like, maybe it's a, it's a, some sort of organization that has impact on a wide variety of areas, rather than a single, a single business. Or maybe that is the best way to do it, is with a single business. I don't know. I'm just thinking, it seems like we ought to be trying to make the best of it for our community, given that it's such a small pot, and just being fast about applying doesn't seem like the best way to make good use of the money.
Grants, the programs that we've been seeing in other communities, the grants, are typically in the range of $2,500 to maybe $3,500, $4,000 per business, and they're being used to help with things like payroll or rent, or what we see as the upcoming... used to help with things like payroll or rent, or what we see as the upcoming large need is outfitting your business to meet the reopening requirements. You know, to have things like the gowns, masks, sanitizer, plexiglass dividers, any other physical improvements to your business or adjustments you might need to make for social distancing that are additional cost to the burden or cost burdens to the business.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes, thank you. I want to agree with Counselor Hoy. I like the idea much better of collecting applications and then having some process through some criteria to go through to get the best bang for your buck. On the one hand, almost $3 million is a drop in the bucket. But on the other hand, $3 million is a lot of money. And so I would, I'd like to see us do something other than first come, first served. Which brings up my question. The city has already heard from some organizations about their need and request. So are they first in line? Or is there a specific application in a timeframe lottery to get first in line? How does that work?
To clarify, $3 million is not the amount that is being proposed to businesses. $3 million, that's the total amount of resources that we're looking at allocating. That includes our normal grant applicants through our normal entitlement program, not businesses. So those are organizations like Marion Polk Food Share or St. Francis Shelter, Community Action Agency Supporting the Warming Shelter. So those sorts of grants that we normally award are included within that total number. Then additionally, what we're looking at are grants that would likely go to a partner like the Housing Authority to provide rental assistance to individuals and mortgage assistance. And then the other pot of that would be the business grants. And that is a smaller amount. You know, we're looking at in the $400,000 to $500,000 range directly for business grants. And then to answer your question about those that have reached out, no, they're not in the queue already. We will be certain that they are receiving all of the information about the grant process and able to apply for grants unless they are, well, in terms of the business side of things. If they are a prior grant applicant that has used our social service funds in the past, so kind of it's on the other side of the ledger there, we are looking at advancing grants to those sorts of service providers that will be helping provide shelter or rental assistance in the community.
Counselor Leong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Counselor Hoy and Counselor Lewis in terms of equability, especially when we are moving with this process. I think there should be some guidelines in place, specifically, for example, like how long the business or organization has been in existence, who does the, what population does this organization or business serve, what types of programs are offered? Because if we're going by the willy nilly, okay, first come, first served, I mean, who do we think is going to apply first versus other groups and organizations who may find out about the opportunity, but after maybe, let's say 50 or 60 applications are submitted? And the first come, first served model, the danger in doing that is if you have a cap of 25 applications, whoever is fast and quick to the draw, whoever sees that first will be able to apply. So I guess another question I would have or something I would suggest is how are you doing the outreach, whether it's to businesses or especially to, let's say, a nonprofit that might work with the smaller communities? How are you ensuring that the message is getting to them, other than let's just say, social media or hoping that someone somehow through word of mouth might get to them? Again, it comes down to making sure that we are reaching out to our communities in ways that we know. And also be a little bit creative considering that we have the issue with COVID-19.
So the business grants and the nonprofit or organizational grants are different categories and different processes. The organizational grants or nonprofits, we are pulling and recommending through the annual grant process that we just went through in January. And working with our current or prior grantees that we know are able to deliver services in the arena of rental assistance and social services.
And also, Kristin, grantees, nonprofit agencies that have agreed to forego their general fund allocation and in the promise of having the CDBG allocation later, all but I think one of the nonprofit agencies was very cooperative and able. The other nonprofit agency was cooperative. They just couldn't, they couldn't make it work within their programming. But everyone else, every other nonprofit was able to make that flexibility work. So that's why, that's why Kristin is keeping the parameters for the nonprofit allocation very, very tight.
Thank you very much. Counselor Nordike?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. You know, this reminds me of, this is, this happens a lot where there's never enough money to go around, right? And you've got lots of great organizations who are all worthy of the support. But how do you decide who gets money out of a limited pond? I used to serve on the city's Social Services Advisory Board, and every year we would get grant applications from great causes local in our community, the Interfaith Hospitality Network, now known as Family Promise, Center for Hope and Safety, St. Francis, et cetera. And it was always a challenge to try and figure out, how do you score the applications? How do you decide who gets what? One of the factors we looked at, just as an example, was leverage. Like, are they going to be able to take this money and make it go much farther? And so the idea of having criteria for which businesses, for example, benefit from this, that's not an easy feat. But you might consider, for example, who can leverage it? What funds, what money would it be used for and so forth? There's lots of great criteria out there, but I think it would be worth seeking input on that. At the same time, I also recognize time is of the essence. Businesses need this money now, right? They needed it yesterday. They need it a month ago. So I, on the one hand, I completely sympathize with the desire to try and make this money go as far as possible, bang for buck, like Counselor Lewis said. On the other hand, there is a huge need for this money to go out ASAP. The only other thing I would mention is that, just from my own experience, I worked with a small business owner back in, I think it was late March, I can't remember. But he's a locally owned restaurateur in South Salem. English is not his first language. And I did my best to help him out and to connect him with city staff so he could learn more about small business loans and other things to help him out with his business. So there are marginalized communities with English not as their first language, who may be the last to know about certain programs like that. And I think it behooves us all to ensure that the outreach is done in equitable ways so that everyone can hear about it and apply for it. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I obviously will agree with every other counselor that's spoken that first in, first out is not necessarily the best way to do this. But I think there are some brief criteria that you might be able to come up with in a short amount of time. So you could then distribute the monies as quickly as possible. You know, I don't even know if, I'm not espousing this, but there could be some sort of lottery, there could be some sort of scoring, and then people ask for X, but you divide it up. So each person gets a percentage of that. The other thing I like to mention too, as it relates to what I was talking about earlier, and that's about small businesses that are tenants of the city. And the city has an effect through the governor and the city said, you really can't open. So I'm wondering if maybe the city manager could talk about, you know, what we're doing with the leases of a small business that can't make the rent because they can't open to sell their products or provide their services?
I can go ahead and address that. Right now, we have our tenants in forbearance for 90 days for those tenants that are within city leasehold spaces. And then, once the 90 day forbearance period has expired, then we will be working with all of them, likely to prorate over the remaining life of the lease to work out a repayment schedule with them.
Right. Yeah. Go ahead.
Forbearance has a specific legal term, and I'm wondering if you could explain that. Does forbearance, I presume it doesn't mean we're forgiving the lease, it just means we're going to tack it on at the end or do something else. So I think that's something we also ought to look at because I think you also said there's maybe some percentage or percentage relief. I think that's, that's pretty important for the city to look at. Thanks.
Yeah. So they don't have to pay their lease payments now over a 90 day period. And then we will work in workout, workout arrangements with them so that they will pay a little bit more on a monthly basis over the remaining life of their lease till they pay back the 90 days that they haven't paid.
Counselor Kazer?
Thank you. I agree too about having some type of criteria. But my question is, is are we under any kind of restrictions from HUD or CDBG as far as what we can use it for? Like what, like, for example, the definition of small, what does small really mean business? Is that, you know, micro business? Or is that actually like you have 50 employees or more and you're considered small? But could you lay out just, I'm guessing we are under some restrictions there too?
Yes, for, for the HUD funds, we are. And we are looking at micro businesses where we're looking at, you know, five or fewer employees. And generally, like disadvantaged businesses or within maybe a culturally specific community or in one of those kinds of categories. That's why we're looking at bringing the general fund into play as well, so that we can broaden the number of businesses that we can assist.
Hey, very good. But as you can tell, Ms. Rutherford, there's a lot of interest on the council. So you have lots of people to help you with the guidelines.
Excellent.
Be glad, all of us will be glad to take your calls on this, okay?
I think I see one more question.
Oh, Tom, did you want her number? What?
Yeah, yeah. No, I've got it. She's on my speed dial. If I can ever find my cell phone, which has been missing.
What you got in mind, Tom?
Yeah. I want to explore this forbearance a little bit. Let's say you're leasing, somebody downtown is leasing from a private landlord who owns the building. And the private landlord is going to say, gee, I'm sorry, I don't know what I can do. I'm not the one who's doing this. It's the state and the city that is saying, you can't open your business. So I'm not the one who's particularly, I don't want to use like the term fault, but I'm not the one who's particularly responsible for this. But we own the buildings. We're the ones who at least on one level down through our city orders, which are following an emergency declaration, which are following what the governor has said. You know, we're at least somewhat responsible for saying, you're going to have to pay us your rent, even though we are the ones who say you can't open your business. So.
Well, Tom, I want to correct you on that. I don't think we actually said you can't, we did not shut any businesses down as a city in our declaration. We have a different set of, that's really out of the governor's office. I really think that's important if you're trying to draw some comparison.
Well, I agree.
To at least be real accurate about who shut businesses down in this state.
If that is the case, then, then the, you know, the arguments, the positions I were taking or asking you to consider, they're not as strong. And I know you will consider that in when you're looking at the forbearance.
Great, thank you. Okay. Well, then clearly we'll have a lot of discussion on this when you come back to us, Kristin. And please, you've heard the various counselors' concerns. I hope you'll take advantage and work with them. Now, why don't we move on to second readings? We've got a work session yet to do.
Ordinance Bill Number 720, an ordinance relating to urban renewal, creating the jury apartments TIF district plan and directing that notice of approval be published. Counselor Osick.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And I don't see any other business. We are adjourned. And we'll move on to our work session here on affordable housing incentives. I'm going to call that work session to order and turn it over, I guess, to city manager powers. Is that your?
Thank you, Mayor. Because no Salem City Council meeting would be a true meeting if we were done in an hour. We thought we'd.
I appreciate you throwing this on the table.
Thank you. Also, we wanted to be responsive to questions we heard when council considered the jury apartments at first reading. And we don't need to drag this discussion out. We want it to be responsive. Kristin is prepared. And we've asked Richard Berger to join us to share information from a developer's perspective on some of the challenges and obstacles to affordable housing in Salem. Council had some specific questions at first reading regarding ratios and the number of units in relationship to the public assistance. So we thought this would be a timely opportunity to continue that discussion, to either just answer specific questions or to answer questions and receive some general guidance for future affordable housing projects. Thank you.
Right. Who will lead off on this then? In terms of, do you want us to just ask questions? Or what would you like?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and kick it off if you don't mind. We don't have a PowerPoint, but we do have some topics that we would like to cover and then open it up for conversation and questions. I'm going to ask if Nicole and Richard could go ahead and make their video live. I will go ahead and can provide an overview of what we're going to cover. And then we'll have Nicole speak and then Richard speak. Then I will talk a little bit about what other tax exemption programs we have and can compare them and then open it up for questions. So what we're going to cover tonight, we give you a high level overview of developments within the community that are moving out of their affordability period and have the impact that that's going to have on affordability within the community. And then the challenges with developing new affordable units, looking at things like site identification, financing, construction challenges, those elements that go into developing a pro forma and have influence on how affordable a development is, kind of what those costs per door are of developing affordable housing. Then the other programs and incentives that we have available, and then to kind of tie that back to the proposed tax increment rebate program. All right. So I will go ahead and have Nicole start and have her address some of the units in the community that we are aware of are moving out of affordability. And then to start talking about the Housing Authority and how they approach the development of new affordable housing.
Right. Nicole?
Good evening. I'm Nicole Yates. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And I have a few talking points tonight in regards to development costs, cost per unit, and then the impacts of losing affordable housing units in Salem. First of all, the impacts of losing affordable housing complexes in Salem, such as we have one currently that is expected to end its lifecycle with affordability restrictions. Here in the next year, we have been in communication with Oregon Housing and Community Services. And we are working to try to work out either an offer or come up with some sort of option in order to keep that project affordable. It's very large. It's a 226 unit in northeast Salem. And so the Housing Authority has, it will be impacted greatly. And so, uh, the Housing Authority has, it will be impacted greatly by this. Uh, we have over eighty voucher holders that reside in this complex. If it comes out of affordability and the market rates are above our voucher threshold, all eighty voucher holders would have to move from that complex. So we have a, a huge impact with that one coming out of affordability. The second one is another northeast Salem affordable housing complex. It's forty-six units. It does have some subsidy involved in it and we don't have this huge of a voucher impact. But again, if it comes out of affordability and those individuals are not able to pay the rent that is then goes to market rate, um, it will impact the Salem area community. On top of that, I've been working with Oregon Housing, um, and trying to figure out how many complexes are coming out of affordability. There was a large, um, boom of building affordable housing in this timeframe about twenty years ago. And that's what we're seeing the impacts now of those going back to the private market, um, industry. So that's how those coming out of affordability can affect Salem in the community. We could potentially have, um, almost three hundred individuals that may be looking for affordable housing again, um, if their rents, uh, skyrocket. So, uh, a few things about developing affordable housing. The funding requirements mandate certain inspections, materials and wage rates, which increases our cost to build these affordable housing complexes. The timeline also involved is typically from our application process to the time it's constructed can be anywhere from four to five years. So that does take, that is an impact on how quickly we can build a complex, um, as opposed to the private market industry. Generally, our pre-development costs are higher. Uh, we have tax credit applications, time needed to acquire funding sources and various things that involved in, in making that happen. The federal, state and local programs all have separate and very distinct, um, guidelines and requirements that we have to meet to, to get that funding. They can be very complex and, uh, very regulated. So that also puts an impact into the construction schedule. Development costs, uh, currently, I actually did a survey, um, of other affordable housing complexes in, in not just Salem, but in surrounding Oregon. And, um, we're averaging, right now it's costing about two hundred and thirty-six dollars per square foot, to two hundred and seventy dollars per square foot, um, in order to, to develop an affordable housing complex. And then, just so everybody understands, probably price per unit per door can be anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. That's quite a bit more than what the, the private industry can build the apartments for. Uh, the Housing Authority has, uh, started the tax exemption program. We've had it up and going for about three years now. It's a, it's an affordable housing partnership that Salem Housing is involved in. It's very flexible. Um, we have private developers that have, um, general partnerships with us anywhere from five to ten years. Most of them are on average are paying a five thousand dollar annual fee. Uh, the Housing Authority then goes out and inspects the units annually and ensures that they're compliant with, um, ensuring that they're remaining the units in affordability. Uh, it's a great program because private market developers can get the units off the ground much faster than us, but it also gives us the ability to acquire more and more affordable housing in Salem. So, do you have any questions for me?
Do we, uh, I, I had a, just a couple, well, one, right now. What will the deficit look like? Have you had a chance to kind of balance the books on the number of doors we'll have as all of this transition is going on? And have you also got kind of an interim strategy right now to retain any of that, those units that you spoke about coming out of the system?
We, we do have a strategy. Um, we do need to come to the Housing Authority Commission. We currently are working with one of the owners.
Okay.
It's a distance working with that owner. We would like to start negotiations. We've opened that window and opened that door. We've communicated to Oregon Housing. The affordability restriction, the new program with Oregon Housing is they have to offer, if, if they're gonna bring it out of affordability, they first have to offer it either to the local housing authority, the local government, or Oregon Housing has the ability to go in and purchase, but then they're going to look for a jurisdiction to take that entity over, um, and manage it. So eventually it would probably come back to the Housing Authority. But, but there is no requirements. They don't have to do any of those. They can just solely, uh, lose the affordability restriction and then, um, go into the private market. So our fear is that we are seeing rent increases at that complex. So they are trying to increase their rents to the max capability of affordability right now. And so if the intention may be that if it does come out of affordability, they're closer to a more market rate and needing the Oregon landlord tenant law to increase those rents above what our threshold would be.
Okay. Are you, uh, are you reviewing your, the Housing Authority's capacity to purchase? I mean, what, how much money you can actually put your hands on? Are you looking at different funding strategies to get a hold of? At the cost per unit, uh, that you described in excess of two hundred bucks a square foot, it would seem like, uh, there would be a real opportunity to figure out another funding strategy for the Housing Authority to purchase it at a much, not a much lower price, but a lower price than new construction. Are you looking for those kinds of?
Yes, I am. Um, I'm looking into the preservation applications with the Oregon Housing. I've reviewed, but there isn't many programs that are program specific for this. Just that you have, you have to actually go into the competitive cycle, which we all know that that can take several years for some projects to get, um, picked up for. But I can, I do know that the Oregon Housing is very supportive of Salem Housing Authority trying to seek especially the large one.
Okay.
And keeping it affordable. So I am communicating with them on options to try to make this happen. But we do need to get that door more open with the owner on negotiating whether he'll, he's willing to sell it.
Okay. And, um, yeah, that's, that's great. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Yoots, you keep using a phrase, coming out of affordability. Could you translate that into something I can understand? Does that just mean that they're raising their rent? Or does that mean that there, there's some programmatic restriction that they're no longer in affordable housing? Is there some rule that's requiring it? Is it strictly just a, a choice that the owner is making? Tell me, tell me what you mean by that, please.
So both of these projects, when they went into conception, were, um, they applied for what is called low income housing tax credit program. And, um, each program is, is program based. It can be twenty years. It can be forty years. We've even seen some competitive up to fifty and sixty year of affordability restrictions. So when they come out of affordability, it means they've met that restriction for low income housing tax credits. They are no longer going to be income restricted or have that requirement. And so then they would technically be going back to a private market and, and not have any restrictions for affordability, maintaining the property, no inspections by Oregon Housing, nobody, um, going in and regulating the paperwork to make sure it's accurate and correct. They could literally just take a rental application and, um, move individuals in like any other apartment complex.
Thank you. So basically, they met their obligation under the program that they entered and now they're free to do whatever they'd like. Is that kind of it?
That's correct. It's a two-year process when you come out. Um, and we did receive our first notice, um, anticipating in the next few months to receive a second notice. Both notices just indicated that they were removing the affordability restrictions, not that they were interested in selling, not that they were, um, not any further communication. We've actually reached out with the Housing Authority's Realtor in attempts to start that communication and dialogue with them.
So Counselor, the same situation hold true with our community development block grant or home funds that go into projects with a twenty-year time period? So, um, the cornerstone project that, um, was just built, uh, we have, uh, the same sort of timeline, you know, and down the road, um, projects like that will come out of affordability as well.
And cornerstone has twenty years, did you say?
We're, for the federal money now, I turned to Richard to see if there's other money in there through the state or tax credits that might have a longer affordability period.
I believe there is.
You know, Richard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It'll be at least thirty years and more likely forty years because of, um, one funding source forces it to be thirty and then another funding source incentivizes it to be much longer. Plus, it's owned by a nonprofit whose sole purpose is affordable housing. So I don't think it'll go out of affordable housing anytime soon.
Okay, great. Counselor Anderson, did I see your hand? You have to come out of mute. There we go.
Yeah. Um, I, 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 first I have a question for, uh, Ms. Oots. You said they have to give two years notice. So in other words, they give you, one is given notice, you anticipate another one of the two developments you were talking about are going to give you notice. So then, once they give us that notice, we've got two years to see if we can do something to keep it in affordable housing?
That's your negotiation period. We can actually, once we can, um, in talking with the Realtor in hopes is that we, if we can get some, to an agreement on terms, then we would have a significant closing date in order to start the application processes and get, um, the funding acquired.
A follow-up question. Uh, I raise this almost all the time when you come and talk to us, and that is the vouchers. So the HUD vouchers aren't keeping up with the market rates. So that would just compound this problem for the, uh, eighty voucher holders in the two hundred unit plus apartment complex because their vouchers aren't gonna, aren't gonna do it once it goes to market rate. Is that correct?
That's a good possibility.
Okay, then I have one final question, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to make sure I understand this. The reason to rely on TIF and other urban renewal, uh, processes and, uh, the other housing processes that you do, uh, the reason to rely on private developers is they can do it quicker and potentially cheaper. And I'm sure Mr. Berger would agree with that. But the, the flip side of that is if the city actually owns the properties and develops them, we don't have any ten-year limit or twenty-year limit or forty-year limit or any limit. As long as that's an apartment complex as we own, and we own it, we can keep it in affordable housing.
That's, yeah, that's.
And we can do forbearance on the lease.
Yes, yes, yes.
That, that's a very good point about if we own it, it stays affordable much longer. The challenge is we can't build it or acquire it fast enough to meet the needs. So we need the partnership with a private sector.
I understand the short-term problems and the, the, the program process. That's what I was saying. There's, but there's still some sort of balancing they have to do at some point.
Counselor Liang?
The one thing that I didn't communicate is the difficulty in locating property to build.
Yeah.
Facilities. Um, it's not that the Housing Authority isn't attempting to constantly, um, find. I mean, we're, we're, we're talking to our Realtor on a regular basis, attempting to find that next piece of land that might come on the market. What, our ability to compete sometimes is also a hindrance, um, just because of our entity and, um, getting, you know, permission through the commission and taking it to commission and that process before we make an offer, sometimes those properties go under contract before we ever make it to that point. So we, it's a very highly competitive market right now. And I'm sure Richard can also, um, speak to this. But attempting to, to acquire land to build on is very, very difficult.
What's the optimal size of property you look for when you're looking for?
Three acres.
Three acres, okay. Counselor Liang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have just, uh, some general thoughts and maybe a few questions. I'm not sure who that would go to, maybe, um, uh, to Director Oots. The first thing is, I mean, we already know that affordable housing is going to continue to be in high demand, especially for our Salem residents. I mean, we are seeing a to, a, a large number of families who are being displaced because they can't find a home that's affordable, even apartments that are affordable. So, um, you had mentioned earlier that some of those apartments are eventually going to be, um, off the list. So what about those families? If, let's just say that there's still families living in those, um, units, are they going to be displaced? And so if they are displaced, how is the city going to help them find another unit? If there are no other units available, are they going to be going back to the priority list but at the top because they're already, um, participating? So that's one question. And the second question, what I'm hearing is that it's a multifaceted, um, situation that we're dealing with. We're having issues with, um, being able to find partners and being able to find land to be able to build affordable housing. So what needs to be done, whether it's not necessarily at the local level, but whether it's a county level or even a state issue? Like what are we, what can we do at the city level to, um, ensure that, uh, our communities are, are taken care of?
So I can tell you that the voucher holders that reside in those apartment complexes, first of all, that landlord will have to comply with Oregon landlord tenant law, which means they can't just skyrocket the rent to above, to probably their max, what they would like in the private market. They will have to do it incremental. And it's very possible that the, for the first few years, the voucher could keep up with it. It's once that hits that point where it's no longer affordable for the voucher, at that point, um, when they come in for their voucher recertification, they will be explained this. And then they will be given an opportunity for a new voucher. They will, and they'll have ninety to a hundred and twenty days to locate another facility to use that voucher, um, and at that point. So those voucher holders will still remain voucher holders. They may have to relocate and find somewhere else to use that voucher. The second part of your question, I can tell you that the Housing Authority communicates with our Realtor to try to get the first option before things go to market. If he is aware of any property or land coming on, I can tell you that the state of Oregon contacts the Housing Authority if we can, uh, find a use for surplus property. Uh, unfortunately, a lot of the surplus Oregon state property in, in Salem happens to be around the jails. We're big on self-sufficiency, so we don't necessarily want to build a big Housing Authority complex right next to a jail, um, where they're surrounded looking, um, at the institutions just because we truly promote family self-sufficiency and moving upward and onward. Next is that, uh, any marketing that can be done for any landowners that are willing to work with the Housing Authority, I can tell you that, um, we have been in contact with several developers that are aware of our partnership program, um, which helps provide a tax exemption based off of, um, how many units that they can provide in affordability. That's the fastest way for us to acquire additional affordable housing units in Salem.
Counselor.
Richard, did you wanna, did you wanna talk at all in this discussion? Did you want to say anything from a developer's point of view?
Um, to, to answer the, uh, sorry, I wasn't ready, Mayor, for, to answer the question, so no.
That cat was bothering you behind.
Did you say it's food?
I think your cat wants to weigh in.
Yeah, yeah, let's listen to the cat for a minute then.
Maybe before Richard, I could address a couple of other things that the city's done that, um, and undertaken to help preserve and add that capacity. Uh, we really have started to focus on this a lot in the last couple of years by enacting the low-income rental housing property tax exemption program for our nonprofit owners of affordable housing, um, to provide that relief. And then also expanding the, um, the SDC waivers, uh, beyond those projects that have federal funding in them to, um, projects that, uh, meet an affordability test. So within local control, there are a number of things that we have done and are pursuing, um, such as the, the, uh, urban renewal district, um, that was just adopted. I think also on, um, a broader statewide level, you know, looking at things like, um, density and, um, zoning, you know, allowing, um, duplexes and triplexes and what would normally be single-family zoned areas. Those sorts of adjustments to development standards are also to try to, you know, increase capacity of multifamily in general. And that kind of goes into that whole supply and demand. While we're looking at it through the Housing Authority and through the city to increase truly affordable. truly affordable housing, more housing stock we can provide will also drive the pricing and affordability within the community. So it's-
Kristen, are we keeping up with these programs you're talking about then? We've done the duplex, triplex, quad. I mean, we're doing that kind of density zoning and ordinance changes. Are we keeping up?
I, I-
Fast enough?
No, I don't think we can build it fast enough.
Okay.
Demand is so great that, and as Nicole was speaking to the limited land supply, it's a huge challenge to develop it fast enough.
If, I hope as you begin looking at how we're going to deal with this over time, because it isn't going to get any better, clearly. You will be coming to us on a regular basis if you develop ideas or have approaches that you think would assist in creating at least an environment that would allow for the opportunity to do more housing.
Yes.
And we do see it. I mean, I think the council's been doing a, a great job approving housing opportunities. I mean, there's very few subdivisions or housing ideas that come to us that really don't move right along. So I, I hope you'll keep, keep in touch with us with these ideas if there's changes we need to make.
We certainly will. And then I, I want to give Richard an opportunity to talk, but I see there's still a question. I think Counselor Kaser has a question.
See what Counselor Kaser has in mind?
Yeah, thank you. I just, I do have a couple of questions. We keep using the term affordable, and then we never really defined it. And I know that term gets used in all sorts of ways. Can we nail down exactly what we're talking about? Because my definition of affordable is probably different than others, and it's probably different than, than HUD, and then, you know, all the others. So, but are we really talking about low-income housing? You have to meet some type of threshold for median income? And what is that? Is that below 80%?
We, we use it broadly. It depends on the program.
Depends on the program.
Programs deeply subsidized will be at 30% of the median income. The TIP district that's proposed, we're looking at an average of 60%.
That's the jury apartments.
Yes. And then I'll let Nicole speak to Housing Authority projects.
Sure. So one thing that the council and the city is helping the authority with is Redwood Crossings. And Redwood Crossings was, we utilize this urban renewal and some federal funding. But that is actually 30% of the median income. It is very low income restrictions. Our average Lytec units are about 60% of the area median income. So, but typically, we see them under 80%. Most of them are in the 60% median income.
What's that, what's that translate into, Nicole, for a family of four?
Right off the top of my head, I'm thinking probably about 40, right around $44,000. Don't quote me on that. I can get the graph out if you would like.
That's okay, but somewhere in that range. I mean, I think people hear these percentages, and I think sometimes you want to just translate them into, into an annual or monthly income. Okay, thank you.
That information can also be found on our website. We keep the most current and accurate information up there.
Counselor Kaser?
Yeah, and I have a couple more questions, but just a quick follow-up. These affordable housing units, regardless of their, are they very low-income, low-income, whatever, they can be owned by the Housing Authority, a private property owner, or a nonprofit. Any of those entities can own, and we have those entities in the city owning all of those. The second question is just, you know, these programs are developed, or the way I understand it is these programs are developed for tax incentives and for 20 years and 30 years to cover the construction costs, really, to try to make back the money that you would have earned had you made these market rate. So I guess the question is, and it's, is if you've covered all the construction costs over 20 years and you're rolling off, but it's really at the discretion of the property owner to just decide to increase their rent. Because at that point, the idea is that you've paid off your costs, now you're just looking at profit. I mean, you still have overhead. You still have to pay your property taxes, your maintenance, all that stuff. But really, the idea is to get through the initial construction. So it's really on them to decide, do I want to continue to offer affordable, or do I want to make more profit off of this? Is that kind of, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my general understanding of these programs is to get that construction just built and to essentially help people do it, not to incentivize you for, forever.
So if, if you're looking at the projects like the ones that are coming out of affordability, yes, once they do reach the end of that term, then it, it does start to transition into a for-profit situation, and that is the owner's choice. Nicole, did you want to go ahead and add to that?
No, that's, that's exactly.
One, one, I, I'm just curious, during this period, one of the things that landlords have been facing is whether or not their tenants can pay rent. I would assume under your voucher program, there's a substantial stability for landlords in terms of what they're receiving, the money coming from the government. Do I understand that right? Is there a stability to a landlord during periods like this?
And we've actually acquired a few additional units because the landlords know they're going to receive their voucher payment from us.
I wonder, do you kind of let landlords know, hey, we're, one thing we are is stable? We're going to be there every month?
Yes, definitely.
That just seems like an attractive.
We've received additional phone calls, especially for the homeless rental assistance program.
Yeah.
Because even ATRAP is stable. We're still paying their rent. We, I think we've acquired about seven during the pandemic. So we're still, we're still seeking the landlords, and we're, we're always looking for a new landlord that's willing to accept a voucher or the homeless rental assistance program.
So any landlord watching can call Nicole Oates, and you've got a deal for them? Is that the, all right, excellent.
Somebody to put in their unit.
Very good.
I've got, I've got two quick, more, thank you. Some of these programs I see, I'm assuming, are not citywide, like the low-income rental housing property tax exemption, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the wrong one, multi-unit housing tax incentive program. It's just available downtown and central Salem. Are there others that are restricted by geography, or is that?
So the, in terms of the geographic restrictions, the Housing Authority program is citywide. The multi-unit program has a geographical boundary. The low-income rental housing property tax exemption is citywide but limited to nonprofits. And then the pilot TIP district, that also has a geographical boundary, but could be replicated in other parts of the community. And then if we are finished with questions for this first round, I'd love to give Richard an opportunity to talk about all of this from his experience and what they've encountered at Cornerstone and what they're looking at at the jury apartments.
I've got one more question, actually, for Richard.
Okay.
Maybe it'll flow into-
Into Richard?
I would be very interested, Richard, to know, in your experience of developing these, if do property owners have better success with maintaining affordability in the long run? And affordability meaning they meet those income targets when there are a mix of units and not just one housing complex of just one income type, like one, you know, 60%, but it's a mix of both market and affordability? That would, I would be really interested to hear your take on that.
So we've built a lot of affordability over the last five years, and only one of the projects had any mix of affordability types, and that's Fruitland Meadows, which is in southeast Salem. And what that allows us to do is serve different groups of the community at different levels. The problem is, there's such a need for affordable housing in the community. All our affordable housing has leased up incredibly quickly. It was brand-new, very nice. Both Cornerstone and Fruitland, one we built in Monmouth, have leased up very well because there's a real need. So it's hard for me to say that one was more desirable to another when the market is so kind of in need of units. We like the idea of serving people at different income levels, but to say that one is more desirable based on my evidence, I don't really have.
Well, maybe if I could just clarify my question, not so much the desirability, but the sustainability of that for the long term, is what I mean. So when we think about these affordable housing complexes rolling off, like in 20 years, like we're experiencing, it's because all of them are affordable units, as opposed to a mix of units where maybe when that happens, you know, roll off, you're going to be able to maintain some of the affordable units because your other things are market rate. That's, that's more of my, you know, sustaining that long term. So we're not trying to figure out, what do we do now? They're rolling off 20 years. They, you know, they want to increase their revenues. So that's, that's kind of what my question was.
I think the, the concern is real of projects rolling off, but the reality is, by the time a project has spent 30 years, generally, it's more affordable anyways. So it's not going to garner top of the market. I'd say the problem is worse now because the, the rents have risen so much. But in a normal cycle, maybe 10 years ago, if a project that was 30 years old no longer became affordable, it would take it a long time, or they'd have to do a massive remodel in order to increase those rents. Okay? The reason they can increase the rents now is because you've had such growth in rent over the last five, six years that landlords are, are more willing to do that. But typically, and I actually went to a national conference where they talked of one of the problems of affordable housing is in the 80s, there wasn't a lot of new apartments built. And this is just one professor's theory. And so the natural occurring affordable housing, you can see, 30, 40 years later, there weren't much built here. So there isn't that naturally affordable, occurring affordable housing 30 and 40 years later. So I think the, the, having projects roll off is always a problem, especially kind of in the micro level, because you have 200 people who were stable, and now they're not. But in general, you shouldn't see something roll off and suddenly become the most expensive apartment around that no one can afford. It's 30 years old, they're not going to garner the market rate units. And I think they have some incentive to negotiate with the Housing Authority to buy those because they're, in a normal market cycle, there isn't people lined up around the block to buy that and raise rents.
Richard, on the front end, the getting the developer, I've known a number of developers who've done affordable housing here in town and other parts of the state and really of the region, and have stopped, saying it just doesn't work financially. Is the model you're using of the front-end mix of single, multi, affordable, I mean, it's kind of a, sorry, every kind of housing that you're doing at jury, is that the model that we'll be seeing in the future? I, I'm, I'm just wondering if that's what can bring more developers into the, into the specific development of affordable housing?
Well, I, I guess I'd say, before I say anything, Richard Berger, Neighborly Ventures, I haven't introduced myself. I think most of you know me, but I apologize for not introducing myself.
No, no, thank you, Richard.
We, we hope so. We develop all over four western states, but Salem is our home. So we do use it a little bit as an experiment of, let's build South Block. We wouldn't have built South Block in Tacoma. We built it here, right? Because it's our home, and we're going to see and, and experiment a little bit. So we are experimenting, experimenting with North Campus, having that mix. We did a lot of research, and we believe it's a great mix. One of the things you, we've talked a lot about is the need for affordable housing. But there's really a need for housing of all types at every level of income strategy. It doesn't mean, oh, I make $44,000 and I have no trouble finding a house, but if I make $35,000, it's really hard. It's, it's at every level. You're trying to find good quality housing. And so we, we really like the idea that if you like your apartment and you like the jury apartment area, you can move to a new house, you know, next door and, and move into a single-family residence. We really like that concept, and we toyed with trying to have more connections to try and transition people. So we maybe have lots and build, but we, we just couldn't, couldn't figure it out, and that's a pretty long time horizon. But we really like the idea of building a community that people don't have to leave, where they're like, okay, now I no longer have to live in an apartment. I no longer need affordable. I have to break away and go far away. We really like the idea of having that community all there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Counselor Anderson?
I unmuted. Richard, first, two kind of comments. First, thanks, and I've expressed this before, thanks to you and your company for your willingness and ability to build affordable housing, and, and I wish more developers would be that way, too. Second comment I have is, is either you or Nicole indicated that the affordable housing income level of somebody with, you know, a family of four would be about, translate about the $44,000. And I think I am pretty correct in saying that the average median household income, or the average household income in Salem is $50,000. It used to be 49, and now I think it's either 50 or 51. So that's pretty close. You know, we're pretty close to the limit, which is disconcerting on many levels, none of which are within our capacity as a city council to do much about, except to try to provide as much housing as we can. I guess my next question kind of relates to what Counselor Kaser was saying. That is, after the 20 years or the 30 years, the incentives go away. So at that point, yes, I understand, you know, the, because of the condition of the unit, it's not, you're not going to jump to the top level. But I guess my question is, assuming that the incentives go, all go away, if the developer still maintain either the same mix or the 100% of affordable housing, would there be a profit in there for the developer, or the incentives are the only thing that allow the developer to keep the affordable housing?
Well, I, the, the market, no, I think that's the only thing that really keeps the incentive. But, but there isn't-
Richard, stop dismissing. In other words, the only thing that allows the profitability is the incentive.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And, and there's nothing to, to bind them to that. They are unburdened by the, by the regulation, people looking over their shoulder.
Yeah, yeah.
Some federal programs is a lot of paperwork, which really costs the projects a lot. Some programs are easier, some programs are less. But to be unburdened by that, you may end up charging the same rent, no longer being officially affordable, and you don't have to raise your rents because you can make your ends meet, but you're unburdened by that person looking over your shoulder.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of years ago, I think it was, there was a document that was out, either an article or something that was published in a, in a newspaper, speaking to the difficulties of being able to build affordable housing. Do you recall that?
I don't know the specific one you're talking about.
Called the-
It would be nice to, to have that redistributed. I can take a look for it as well. But I know we're kind of just shooting off the cuff everywhere tonight, and it'd really be nice to have some kind of a white paper that speaks to all the individual issues and the difficulties throughout the, the spectrum, not just in what we're calling affordable housing, but it's the entire system and, and the costs that drive that, and the demand, not necessarily just from our community. We have people driving down from Portland because our housing's cheaper than theirs, and they, and they take everything that we have. So I, it's, it's a really complex piece. I, I know that Nicole, you know, spoke to some of the difficulties associated, you know, with the federal restrictions and, and Richard as well. But there, there's other factors outside of that land cost being the big one, and the ability to actually find land that's, you know, easily buildable now. But it would be nice to see all of those, so we could actually tip things off rather than just say, hey, yeah, we have a great big discussion, and, and it's not documented anywhere. Nobody has a clue what the heck we talked about next year.
Okay, good suggestion. Any, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much. Where do we go now with this? Kristen or Steve or Nicole, where are we headed now? We've had this work session. What-
Yeah. Why, so why did we have-
What do we do now? Are we going to do the white paper that Councilor Nanki mentioned?
Well, I, I think a couple of things. We, we did want to bring to your attention the, at least within the context of federal housing programs, an urgent opportunity problem with the units that are, are losing their affordability. Second, as, as Kristen pointed out, we did see the jury apartments, single property tax increment, finance district is something that's repeatable elsewhere in, 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 in the city. And we wanted to confirm this evening that that's still of interest to council if we bring, bring you specific projects. And then, yes, following up on Councilor Nanki's point, either certainly a white paper or bringing this issue back when you're updating the strategic plan, the policy agenda for 2021, to have, to capture that, that more comprehensive issue of affordability.
And then the one reason was that we will be coming back here in the next couple of months with a development agreement to set the terms of number of affordable units within the, the apartments that are within the TIP district. And so we wanted to set some groundwork about what, what drives and impacts the costs and the profitability and the ability to develop that complex.
Well, I, I think one other that would be real, is going to be, I think, real important is understanding where, how you would like to proceed, whether you report to the council or the Urban Renewal Agency, the Housing Authority. But is developing and supporting you all in that strategy of dealing with these three hundred units coming out of affordability? What, what should we be doing? What do you want to have done to try to forestall that? Or to, you know, somehow interject ourselves into that real, real strongly? And I, I hope you'll, you'll keep us well informed as to what's going on.
We certainly will. And before, I do see, I see, we do have more questions here. But before we wrap tonight, and knowing that we will be coming back with the development agreement, I want to make sure that you have the opportunity to ask Richard any questions that you might have about what would go into that development agreement on their end in terms of the number of affordable units within the complex. So I'm just making sure that, that everybody has the opportunity to ask any questions that you have about that.
Well, was the number, we were told at around ten, ten, fifteen percent, somewhere in there, was the negotiating space for the affordable units? Is that correct, Richard? Is that generally where the discussion begins or ends or whatever with you guys?
Yeah, yeah, we were originally at twenty percent and then the subsidy got reduced. And when we did the math, we were looking at around ten percent. And the, the key factors that will play into whether we can increase that are what the construction prices are going to be and what the loan parameters are going to be. Because if the banks won't fund you, you have to come up with more equity, which means that's more expensive than lending funds. So, so those are the two big things where I'm, I'm very hopeful I can come off that ten percent. But how much, I don't know until we get the real numbers. And then we can, we can share them with the Urban Renewal Agency and go through the numbers.
Okay, okay. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate what you just said, Richard, because I recall the discussion was, it was twenty and then various factors are moving it down closer to the ten. And I presume that in order to reach some final negotiated agreement, you're going to have to share your financial discussions or, or your financial calculations with the city folks, at least in a proprietary sense, that so we can get some conclusion that, that that is the case. That's number one. Number two, this is kind of a broader question, and I raised this the last time. And I would, if we are going to have some sort of white paper, I would appreciate some sort of discussion of whether it would be appropriate or effective for the council just in general on these TIPS, which I think are a very good thing, because it, it doesn't stick you all in urban, in, in urban renewal areas that are already, by nature, they were blighted and they're commercial and they're industrial and that sort of stuff. So I think it's a very, very good program. But I, I would like some sort of response to whether or not it would be effective or appropriate for the council, just to set some sort of aspirational goal. We want fifteen percent, we want twenty percent. And then with the, I mean, a law, you would call that a rebuttable presumption. We want twenty percent. And if you can show us, developer, that twenty percent with this particular project is not possible, then we can get to the closest. So I'd like some sort of staff discussion about that.
Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, to, to Mr. Berger, you, you commented that you have other developments taking place in three or four other states?
Yeah, yes, right now I, we have projects in Washington, Utah, and Oregon.
And, and how do we compare?
Compare in what way?
In, in overall cost to develop the ability to actually, are all your projects affordable in those other states? Or?
No, actually, we only do affordable in Marion and Pope County. Affordable is not where we make our living. It is really a philanthropic effort on our part. We did some affordable housing as a company back at the beginning of Lytec and still own a few back from the early nineties. But we haven't actually developed it until ten years ago when we saw the incredible need in the community and said, what can we do about it? And one of the things we said is, well, we build housing. So it seems like that's a good way we can, we can contribute to the problem. We could donate to a nonprofit, or let's do what we do best and, and serve Marion and Pope Counties.
Excellent, well, and, and thank you very much for that. That kind of gets to my other piece in regards to just in general housing, how we compare. And it'd be nice to see some real pro forma data out across the entire system on what the fees are, what land costs are comparatively, with equivalent jurisdictions, and those things where we could actually help drive costs across the spectrum down, which then allows us to have more affordability throughout the entire system. So if you have any suggestions on where Oregon or Salem in general might be able to improve, we would welcome them.
Well, I, I, I've served on committees in the city and I've stated my piece on where it can improve a lot. Jurisdiction broadly, if you find wonderful research that tells me where I could build and make the most money, I'll welcome that research, because I'm constantly trying to figure out what jurisdictions work. And, and just generally, I, I, I know very deeply certain communities in certain areas, because that's where I'm building. And I told you before, property taxes, SDCs and rents are the three things I look at right away to tell if a community might be ripe. That, and then just overall market, is this project, is this city growing and have a great pop employment base or not? Those are the four factors I look at. And I can look at a market fairly quickly and determine if I think there's room for a project.
Thanks. Councilor Nordai?
Thank you, I just wanted to offer a couple reflections. First of all, I'm so glad that we're even having this discussion about affordable housing. I think it is a real game changer on so many different levels. And I just want us all to remember the kinds of people that we serve by having affordable housing. A lot of it are seniors on fixed incomes. Many folks who are living either on a fixed salary or a paycheck, paycheck by paycheck every single month. And one of the things that I've learned from being on council in such a short amount of time is that affordable housing prevents homelessness. It can make or break the difference between someone on the street and someone with a roof over their head. We have a lot of folks living minimum wage, engaging in the gig economy where they've got two to three jobs that they're trying to handle right now in various capacities. So I just want to remind all of us that the folks that we serve will reduce and prevent homelessness. And when you prevent homelessness and reduce it, you also reduce the demand for other social services. So there are some real savings to our entire community by having affordable housing. And also, if all your money isn't going to housing every month, it means you have discretionary income to spend on our local businesses, to support our local artists, our local restaurants, our local shops. So this isn't about charity. This is about ensuring a robust economy that has an impact on everyone across our city. And I would welcome more information in the form of a white paper. Thank you for suggesting that.
Well, thank you. Anyone else, or are we? Well, we really appreciate you, you working with us on this. This is something of real interest, we'll look forward to the final product on the jury apartments. I think that'll help us understand real clearly the economics of what we're looking at. And any kind of, of strategy or systemic discussion of the kind of economics that have made this problematic, I think, would be really helpful. So really, really appreciate the work, Mr. Manager, and, and thank you very much for holding this work session for us. And with that, we are adjourned unless someone has objection and wants to spend some more time here on the Brady Bunch, okay? We're adjourned.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.